Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 1st County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are in the front row with the Argus leader. And Robert would help you with a listening device if you need something to hear better with, and he's in the front row. With that, we will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I got motion.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings minutes from 11:24 2015. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Any changes or amendments to the minutes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $4,287,080.31. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Are there any comments on the bill?
Madam Chair.
Auditor Litz.
Yes, Bob Litz from the auditor's office. I did receive a call from the obviously absent Mr. Barth yesterday, who likes to comment on the bills, and he asked me to comment on the unusually high number associated with our bills today. And he wanted to put out that there was over $3.7 million worth of bond payment and bond redemption payments in this week's bills.
Have a motion, a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Is there a motion? Got motion?
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries as of December 2015. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. I have several employee anniversaries for you. Most of them are celebrating five years of service. And we have Monty Wannenbach, our IT Director, Abby Raisler, who is a senior deputy states attorney, Jeff Barnable, Ann Daniel Christensen, who are both deputy sheriffs in the sheriff's office, and then Jesse Nessheim in the museum. We also have Barb Donaldson, who's a caseworker with Human Services, who's celebrating 10 years of service. And I'm pleased to let you know that Denise Christensen wins the award this week for 35 years of service. So I guess it's a 35-year award, and she's our administrative secretary out of emergency management.
Denise is here with us today. Thank you, Denise. We don't see you very often down here on this end of town. So thank you for stopping in and showing your face.
You've spent a great 35 years.
Thank you. Item C is recognize volunteers of county government for November 2015.
Again, over 200, 232 volunteers across county in eight areas. Our thanks go to them.
Thanks, go to the volunteers. Thank you, Carrie. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize auditor to publish notice of a hearing to consider adoption of the Minnehaha County long range transportation plan. Item eight, and that's on file at the auditor's office. Item number eight is...
We need to do an authorization.
Oh, sorry, authorized. I'm looking for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is compromise of lien. Item A is DPO number 22103 for the amount of $18,600 deferred from last week. Kirsten Katmeyer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. This item, as you may recall, is deferred from our November 24th meeting. I'll briefly summarize the request. The commission offices received an application for compromise from a personal representative of a decedent's estate. The decedent had incurred several large medical bills that were reduced to lien back in the year 2000, and it stayed on record since that time. The decedent passed away. They're looking to wrap up the estate. Right now, there's a probate court action pending to do that. In doing that, the estate, it's clear from the record that we've been shown, the estate lacks the assets to pay all of the creditors that have come forward at this time in full. The probate court's going to consider which creditors are paid and in what amount in the future. We do have this lien against the property in question, of course, as you know. Generally, a lien first in time against property is enforceable first in the name of that lien holder, and we are first in priority in time on that. However, the estate is asking that in order to maximize the amount in a free sale of this real property that they have, that we release the lien against the property alone, leave it against the decedent's name personally, and allow them to go forward with the sale of the real estate. That's, I believe, scheduled now for December 7th. So basically, the request before you from the estate is to release the lien just against the property today. I believe the attorney for the estate might be here to speak to that issue. I will say that since that last consideration last week, I'll bring you up to date. We have received releases from two of the other claimants. One of them, the State Department of Social Services, for some, I believe, end-of-life medical residential care. That has been released, that lien for $40,000 approximately against the property itself, leaving it against the estate individually, and also a lien by AAA Collections for some credit card debt. That has been released as to the property only, leaving it against the estate. So that has been done to date. We also have some more definite figures about what the estate's expenses will be, as well as the expenses for the real estate sale if it goes forward. Just looking at that and looking at our priority, I would say it's most likely that the county will be paid in full even if we release the lien as to the property only as requested today. There seems to be enough assets that our priority in time, or not priority in time, but priority in class, I should say, in probate court would be such that we would be paid before some of the other claimants in full. So I don't know if anyone else wants to address the issue today, but that's my summary of it.
Did you want to say anything? Could you just come to the microphone and identify yourself and your address?
I am Jim Myers. I'm the attorney for the estate of John Harding. What I would suggest that the county do is release the lien contingent upon sale. And by that, I mean do not file a satisfaction of the lien with the register of deeds, but rather send the release to the title company, and it is only to be filed then if the sale goes through. So that way, if the sale does not go through, you preserve your position. After closing costs and expenses of administration, there will be approximately $60,000 left to be divided among creditors. What I would intend to do is file a petition with the probate court, give the state's attorney's office ample opportunity to appear at the hearing and to address the issue and to argue as to what the position of the county is. All of the other creditors will be given the same opportunity. I cannot guarantee you what the probate court will do or guarantee you how much money the county will receive. I can pretty much guarantee you that if this sale does not go through, no creditors are going to get anything. So we would ask your assistance in allowing this sale to go through.
Are there any questions for Mr. Meyer?
I have one question.
Commissioner Bender.
Jim, can you remind me, have you passed the deadline now for all the creditors to file claims?
Actually, the deadline is December 14th. So it is possible that there could be additional claimants that come along in the next two weeks. And we would not be able to schedule a hearing until after that deadline is passed. But so far, we have at least $150,000 in creditor claims. Actually, there's $150,000 in liens on the property. There's probably $200,000 in total creditor claims. So somebody's going to take it in the shorts. I don't know. As I say, I can't guarantee what will happen with the county's lien. But if we can't get the sale through, then I guess Wells Fargo and their first mortgage, they'll foreclose, and nobody gets anything.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Just a minute. Just a minute. Commissioner Bennigan.
Kirsten, if you wouldn't mind repeating kind of what your opinion was, I think, last week when we talked about our position and its security, if you will, if we do release it.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure that I was clear on that because, as Mr. Myers has said, without the sale of the property, there's probably going to be no assets.
Unless I'm not aware of some other expenses against the property, my understanding was the mortgage was in an amount that if it were to go to foreclosure sale, I believe there would be excess proceeds from that. Is that not accurate?
Well...
I mean, we can't say for sure what the bid would be, but...
Well, I can guarantee you that Wells Fargo would bid only what they are owed. Then anyone else can come in and bid if they wish, but...
And what was the balance on that? Wasn't that $8,000 or so?
Yes, approximately.
Okay. I mean, we do have kind of an active group of people who do come to those foreclosure sales, and obviously, this is all speculation. But based on the asking price and the free sale that's going forward and the figure for that, I would guess there would be some excess proceeds. And under that theory, I mean, I do think we have some priority in time there. The reason I advise you today that I believe we have some priority to argue with the probate court is our claims arise under state law, and there's a certain hierarchy of payment there that I believe we're kind of in the same category of DSS. So that's why I'm advising you of that today.
I would suggest, I think, that if the situation goes to a foreclosure, the revenue stream will be dramatically reduced by someone who's going to buy it on a foreclosure sale versus a real estate transaction.
Any other comments?
I got a question. You had a closing scheduled, and now it's rescheduled for tomorrow?
Next Monday.
Is the seller qualified or the buyer qualified?
Yes.
Brief qualified. So there's no reason to believe, although I understand it can happen, that the sale will not go through. There's no reason to believe it won't go through.
No, they were ready, willing, and able to settle or to close on the 23rd, which was the originally scheduled date. And this is a young couple with a baby, their first house. They're living in the basement of one of the parents, so there's quite an incentive for them.
Situation right now.
They'd amend their parents, probably.
If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Kelly.
Just one more thing, too, and I would agree with Mr. Myers, that you can modify that compromise to make a contingent on the sale, as he suggests. I would recommend you do that.
And that'd be my motion to release the lien contingent on the sale of the property.
Upon the property only and not...
Against the property only.
Only and not the individual. Is that understood? Is that understood? Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly.
I think in this case, the last thing we want to do is see this thing go to foreclosure. And so I think this is the best policy for us to... And because of state law, we do have the priorities there. I guess there's no guarantees. But I think that this would be the best interest of the county.
Okay. I think it was a good thing we deferred for one week for more information. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number B is consider a recommendation by Haugie Associates for compromise of lien, number DPO number 38509, in the amount of $671.20. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, this is a request for a compromise that was brought forward by our collections contractor, Haugie Associates, for DPO 38509. One thing I'll just mention and point out early that you may have noticed is when you look at our lien summary sheet, the total amount is different than the amount that we are looking to settle this for. The reason is that last lien, the court-appointed attorney amount for $1,850, is out of Mitchell, out of Davison County. That's what's represented by the eight over on the far right-hand of the sheet. So I would just point that out so that our lien, our total lien amount, is $671.20. And with that, as the total Minnehaha lien, Haugie is recommending and brought this to us, that we settle that upon a payment of $503.40, representing 75% of the total lien.
Any questions for Robert? Is there a motion? Go ahead.
I would make a motion to accept the compromise.
A second. Motion and a second to accept the compromise for $503.40. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. The next item is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. I see no one. We'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is the FEMA briefing on proposed amendments to the Minnehaha County floodplain management ordinance, Nine Mile Creek watershed. Scott Anderson, good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, County Planning. And this morning, I would like to introduce two good friends of ours, Tom Birney and Barb Fitzpatrick. And they will be giving a short presentation on some proposed changes to our flood ordinance. This is being called the Nine Mile Creek watershed study. And primarily, and as you'll see in this presentation, the bulk of the changes and the work that's occurring is within the city of Sioux Falls and Lincoln County, primarily Lincoln County. The Nine Mile Creek watershed is a rather large watershed that flows down towards T and into Lincoln County. So with that, I will gladly turn this over to Barb and Tom, and they will give you a short presentation on the proposed changes. There is going to be a public open house tomorrow night at Pettigrew Elementary at 7:00 PM. And this will be, the participants or the affected property owners from the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County have been invited to this. Notices have been sent out to all the affected property owners, informing them of the meeting tomorrow night. So with that, I will turn it over to PowerPoint presentation. I'll turn it over to Barb and Tom, and they will be glad to show you what's going on.
Good morning. My name's Tom Birney. I'm with FEMA Region 8 out of Denver, Colorado. Appreciate your time. As Scott said, we are up here, we are with the state as well, to discuss the Nine Mile Creek watershed study. This is a study that will be impacting Minnehaha County, as well as Lincoln County, the city of Sioux Falls, and the city of T. The impact in Minnehaha is pretty minor. Based on our calculations, we are only looking at about 10 properties that will be impacted with one structure going into the floodplain. What I want to do right now is just quickly run through what this project entails and kind of talk about the implications of this and the timeline associated with it. As Scott said, there is a meeting tonight at 7 o'clock for the public to come for the residents of the city of Sioux Falls, as well as Minnehaha County, to see this presentation, to ask the questions, and find out if they want to appeal, if they want to see the impacts on the insurance, how to do that. So here's a list of those that are working on this project. We have Jeff Schmidt and Andrew Berg from the city of Sioux Falls. Scott Anderson is the primary contact here for the county. John Peters is the floodplain administrator for Lincoln County. Sean McNabb is the actual project manager for FEMA. He is meeting with Lincoln County this morning. I'm the National Flood Insurance Program Specialist for South Dakota, and I deal with a lot of the issues here in South Dakota. We also have state representatives Mark Macy and Jim Poppin. Mark Macy is with the state Office of Emergency Management. The Sioux Falls project, the main reason behind this project is new engineering methods. So this area that is being impacted and revised is due to development and growth. As this area is being developed and growth, we want to identify what that true risk is to notify the homeowners if they are at a risk so that they can better be prepared for it. This study was based on information light on, which is topography that was gathered in 2012, and it was done on the ground boot survey and then correlated with the 2013 high water marks. The information that is being produced in this study correlated fairly well to the recent, I think it was June flooding event that occurred. The maps did, the city did go out and verify based on that where the floodplains are, and things really did correlate pretty well. This study was officially released on October 8th as preliminary information, which means we took a study that was created by Stockwell Engineering. It's a local firm. They did the study. They produced it. They provided it to FEMA. FEMA went ahead, updated our maps. And on October 8th, we released those maps to the public and said, "This is what we are proposing." And what we are here today is to say, "This is what we are proposing. Are there questions on it? Is there anything that the counties, the cities, or residents have to alter or change the maps if they want to provide comment on it?" That's what this process is, to provide the city and the communities and the residents to look at it and provide feedback on it. There are seven revised flood insurance rate map panels. So as a result, there are areas that are being touched with in Minnehaha County that actually are not having their floodplains revised. But based on our map scheme, it looks like a very large project. As this is a physical map revision, we are going to update our flood insurance study, which will require the county to update and basically redo their ordinance, just to say our ordinance is based on this effective map. That's part of the reason why we are here. It's a very similar process to what's going on for the Sioux Falls Levy project. So we've gone through that once. This is the same type of meeting and same type of process that we are going down for this project. Here's a map of the areas that are impacted. As you see, a lot of it does fall within Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls. Mainly, the impact from Minnehaha County is going to be in the southwest corner of the county. The impact, a lot of it is going to be the city. But the county is going to be impacted, which would require the county to update their ordinance. This is a map that shows the changes to the, or the effective flood insurance rate maps for the special flood hazard area. Majority of the area that is blue had already been mapped floodplains. There are a lot of new floodplains coming in. But the changes are not to the big skunk or the Nine Mile Creek tributary. They're unnamed tributaries to those flooding sources. So when we get to this mapping process, we have comments and appeals. Comments are more of homeowners that come in or are not happy that they're located in a special flood hazard area, where they want to say, "I'm out" based on elevations. Or the maps names, there's a street name that is incorrect. Those are going to be comments. Appeals to the maps are going to be based on scientific data. So if someone does not like the map, they can appeal the map, but they have to come in with scientific data to dispute and show why the map is incorrect. FEMA will address all comments and appeals and coordinate those information within the communities and within the county. So anytime we get an appeal, we will acknowledge those appeals. We will coordinate and resolve those appeals and work with the county on the impacts of those appeals. A lot of the appeals that we do receive, though, are going to be from homeowners, more probably within the city, as the city of Sioux Falls is going to be more impacted by it, where it can be addressed as a comment, where we will work with them based on individual house, not a big-scale map change. This is the timeline of the process. The community review and final meeting is where we currently are on the timeline. We will have that after this timeline. We will do publication within the newspapers, talking about the appeal. There will be two publications. And then we'll do a publication in the federal registry, which will then open up the appeal process. The appeal process runs for 90 days, where people, residents, the city, or the county can submit those appeals or comments to FEMA. After that, the 90-day window closes. FEMA addresses those appeals, provides feedback and comments on that. And depending on the appeals that we receive, we move forward with issuing what's called a little final determination. That starts a six-month period for the county to update and adopt their new ordinance. And then we go to the effective panels. So we are probably about a little over a year out on this process of going into effect, probably close to about a year and a half, based on the timelines right now. Right now, it is a little bit more fuzzy on the timelines, because if there are appeals, we have to address those appeals, and those could change the timeline as we move forward. Here's a better description of the timeline. So spring of 2017 is what we are looking at for a new effective flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study for the county. So the responsibility of the community, it is the community's maps. FEMA takes a study from Stockwell Engineer. We update the maps, but ultimately, it is the community's maps. So we ask the community to review the maps to verify the accuracy of it. If there are street names that have changed or a flooding source name that is used differently, that would be a comment that we would ask that the community provide to us. Or if the community has updated information to change the maps, this would be the time to supply that so we can reflect the most accurate information for the residents here. The whole purpose is to display the risk that is associated with what's going on out there. So if we have better information, we would love to see that, so we could incorporate that into the effective maps. Whenever we talk maps, we always hear questions about insurance. What are the insurance ramifications? As I said, we are looking at one structure going into the special flood hazard area. So if we're going from outside the floodplain into the floodplain, if there is a federally backed loan, it is a requirement to carry flood insurance. So that is going to be an impact for that one residence. That relevant resident can do, quote, and comment or apply for a letter of map amendment to get that structure removed or reevaluate it. For those that are going from a high-risk, meaning in the floodplain out, that would drop the mandatory requirement of flood insurance, which then they can go out and purchase flood insurance at a reduced rate. It is always up to the lender to determine whether or not they're going to require flood insurance, even if you're outside the floodplain. And we do have areas that are going to be impacted, but there's no change to their risk. So whatever their risk was before will remain their current risk. When we get to insurance, the insurance is tricky. I think the key takeaway is the residents should talk to their insurance agent, because there's a lot of ways to write insurance, just like a car insurance. But the car insurance, if you're a 16-year-old driving a Ferrari, the rate of the insurance is going to be a lot higher versus someone in their 40s driving a Big Ford truck that has a perfect record. Same kind of principle applies to a house. If the house is older, it may be rated a certain way versus a new house that was what we consider built-in compliance. So we would always recommend that anyone that has questions about insurance, discuss those with their insurance agent. They can go over the particulars of that. And that is the quick synopsis of it. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for the commissioner? Commissioner Kelly.
I got a couple. You know, FEMA says, "Well, go talk to your agent about the insurance." But in fact, the insurance can be a very significant amount of money.
That's correct.
Can you give us any idea on, say, a $200,000 home, what flood insurance?
So the insurance rating is tricky. So a $200,000 home that is not located in a special flood hazard area with $100,000 coverage of content, which is the maximum coverage through the National Flood Insurance Program, they may be eligible for what's called a preferred risk policy. Meaning, "I know I'm at risk," or "I know this area has received flooding, but I'm not technically in the special flood hazard area. I'm a low risk." A policy of that rating would be approximately $550. There may be certain surcharges. If it's a secondary home, they may receive a $200... it's a secondary home, they may receive a $200, $250 surcharge versus a primary residence. A, a structure that's in the floodplain, if you're built-in compliance, will be rated different versus a structure that was what we consider grandfather prior to the area, um, built, let's say, in the 50s. And it all comes down to how high is the finished floor compared to the base flood elevation. So it's very difficult to give a ballpark estimate, because you need to know the age of the structure, whether they're built-in compliance, is it a crawl space, is it a basement? All those come in factors for rating of the insurance. It could be $1,000. It could be a lot more, depending on the age and the way the structure was built. So unfortunately, I don't have a better answer besides that preferred risk policy for it.
Right. Excuse me, yeah. Um, I, I guess what bothers me is, and it's not so much that we've only got one structure in the county, but somebody has a home that all of a sudden, because of new engineering techniques, they make it in the floodplain. Um, you know, they've been in the home for 10 years, and all of a sudden, now they're having to buy $2,000 worth of insurance. Is that what, in effect, happens?
In some, in some cases, yes. Um, so sometimes what will happen...
But it's because of technological changes, not any change in his conditions, or...
No, it could be both, actually. It could be technology. So some of these studies may, and that's not the case here, may have been an old study from the 70s that have been updated. This is a brand-new study. A lot of this area that is being impacted is being studied for the first time, meaning that at the time the maps originally were produced, the area was not seeing development and growth. So FEMA does have limited funds and budget, and we work with the community to say, "Where do you want us to map?" And at the time the maps were made, there was not a lot of growth going on out here, so we did not do a study out here. So this is an area that is being studied for the first time because of the development that's going on. So that's why, for this particular situation, they're going to see a new floodplain coming in. Other times, it may be a new study or a study that's been old, that has been updated, because we now have longer records of precipitation. How much water's going to flow? It might have been 25 years' worth of new records, and the weather is changing, so that comes into the way the models are run. So there's a lot of factors and a lot of changes. So it could be technology, or it could be environmental. The creek has migrated, or someone did a project, and now that creek that used to be over here has moved and been channelized over here based on a project that needs to get reflected on that.
Okay, but, and this only affects if you have a federal insured mortgage, is that correct?
Correct, so...
I mean, if you've got, if you've been in a house for 25 years, you have a mortgage paid for, you really have the option of whether or not you want to buy it.
Right. So these maps are for flood insurance, but it's also about risk assessment. So if you do not have a federally backed loan, your house is paid off, there is no mandatory purchase for flood insurance. The lender, if you're outside the floodplain, the lender still may say, "I want to protect my asset and require flood insurance." But the impact really is, if you're in the floodplain, you have a federally backed loan, then it's going to be a federal requirement to carry flood insurance.
And what about those people that have, uh, that bought a house 10 years ago, have an FHA loan? They're, they're going to be mandated?
They would. So if they bought a house, doesn't matter if you're the first owner or second owner, but if you own a house, it's in that floodplain, you have a federally backed loan, then you're going to be required to carry flood insurance. And then, at that time, they would talk to the agent to top, figure out what is the rate of the insurance, and then we start down in this decision tree. Can we get what's called built-in compliance? Was this house built 10 years ago, not in the floodplain? We're going to reward you and provide you a lower rate of insurance for that. Is this house built in the 50s? There's a different rating for that. So it comes down to, once, if you're in, you have to buy flood insurance, we start down this decision tree making process.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. This was Commissioner Bennigan. Go ahead.
Tom, if in fact, um, there's undeveloped property that's now in the floodplain, are they still able to build in that plain, or is there engineering changes that need to be met to be able to do that along with the insurance issue?
So the insurance issues pertain to a structure, so a vacant piece of land will not have a insurance implication. If you have land that is within the floodplain, you are allowed to build in it, but you must follow the county's floodplain ordinance.
Okay.
Commissioner Bennigan?
No.
Any additional questions? This was just a briefing. Scott?
I just want to make sure that everyone is, um, clear of the date for the public open house, which is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, Pettigrew Elementary, which is on 53rd and Klein. And, uh, once again, representatives from FEMA will be there, representatives from the city, myself, and we'll have all this information that we will be providing to the impacted and affected property owners that have all been notified, so, by mail, so just want to make sure we get the date out there tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. Pettigrew.
Thank you, Scott. If there's no additional questions, we will move on. Thank you, Tom, for coming in the snow. Item number 12 is, um, consider, it's, no, we're on, item number 11. Consider a resolution to declare certain mobile home distress warrants for unpaid property taxes as uncollectible, uncollectible. Robert Wilson.
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. This is an item you dealt with last week, uh, with, uh, to declare certain mobile home distress warrants as uncollectible. There was a question about one of the figures that was included in that table. Um, after that discussion, I got, uh, some updated information, uh, from the, uh, from the Treasurer's Office on that. We have included that updated information, uh, regarding with the amount of, of one of the, uh, the back taxes owed, and so we would just, uh, ask you to approve this resolution with the correct amount for the, uh, item that was in, in question last week.
Yes, there was a typo in our resolution last week, and so we're just correcting it. This deals with, um, parcel decal number 236, and the amount is $37.35. Are there any questions? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 12 is consider a bid award for the WH Lion's Fairground facilities exterior repairs. The bids were open November 18th. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson again. Um, on November 18th, we did, uh, open the bids for repair work up at the WH Lion Fairgrounds for, uh, following hail damage from last, last summer. Uh, we got, uh, received five bids on this one. Um, the low bid, uh, was from Calb Construction, uh, at $140,990, and that is, uh, again, the low of, of five bids. The, um, uh, estimate from our insurance company, uh, Midwest Family Mutual, to, um, repair this damage was $158,441.22, so we, we're looking at a bid under, uh, under the estimate, which is always good news. Um, again, this is, uh, to repair, um, damage that was done to roofs, siding, and flashing on, uh, buildings, um, including the, um, Nordstrom multipurpose building, the horticulture building, the old McDonald's Farm building, beef barn, and the dairy barn. Um, again, this is, the county has already received an amount, a payout amount of a little more than $91,000 from this insurance payment. There's a, um, a holdback amount of approximately $56,000 that will be paid, um, once the, um, repairs are completed. Uh, those, with the, uh, the estimate coming in, the, the contract, the bid coming in less than the, the estimate, that the remaining amount may, may adjust to, uh, reflect actual cost. Uh, but we will, we will work with, uh, our insurer and, and the contractor to get this completed and get this project wrapped up.
Any questions for Robert? I'd look for a motion. The request is, um, to accept the low bid from Calb Construction in the, for the cost of $140,990 with the option of additional siding replacement on the horticulture building at the cost of 900, $9,000, and that would be included in the bid, I mean, in the motion?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is the Minnehaha County Liaison, Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Okay. Item number 14 is new business. Is there any new business? Item number 15 is old business. Robert, did you have old business? No, it's walking out. Okay. Um, I'd look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel discussion. All those, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.